Further hearing in the Queen on the uptake of Heming against Westminster City Council.
May please your lordships, I appear on behalf of the respondents, together with Mr Philip Colvin, Queen's Counsel, and Mr Tim Johnston. My learned friends, Mr David Mathias, Queen's Counsel, and Mr Charles Streaton, appear on behalf of the appellant. As to the structure of today's hearing, whilst of course we are entirely in your lordship's hands, the parties have agreed that we should go first, and that they will follow, the appolines will follow us. As we understand it, there are two main issues for consideration today. The first is restitution, and the second is costs. In terms of the structure of our submissions for the respondents, Mr Colvin will be dealing with costs, and on the restitution issue, we'll be dividing up our submissions as follows. First of all, I will be addressing the question of whether, as a matter of law, Westminster can resist restitution of the element of the fees which was charged contrary to Article 13.2 of the Services Directive, on the basis that it could have charged that element of the fee lawfully at a later point. I'll be focusing on EU law, in particular San Giorgio and Lady and Kid, which I say provides the complete answer to that question, and I say that answer is no, they cannot resist our claim for restitution. I'll also say some words about domestic law, which I say provides the same result, but that would be very much second fiddle, because I say this is a question of EU law, EU law provides the complete result, so your lordships don't even look at domestic law. I should make clear that we do accept that this court should decide these points of law, although we indicated otherwise in our written submissions, in the light of the listing of this hearing, and the fact that your lordships will have full submissions on these points, it seems like the only sensible course to have the benefit of your lordship's views on them. Mr Colvin will then deal with the issues of fact and principle, which arise if, contrary to my submissions, in fact Westminster is entitled to resist restitution. I should make clear here that we're not asking this court to make determinations regarding the actual figures, and the court will have seen that, I believe it's now common ground, that the factual question should be remitted, if they cannot be agreed back down to the High Court, to be determined there. We do say, however, it's important to flag up some of the issues which will arise, and we will invite this court to make directions in respect of some of the elements of that exercise, if your lordships are against me on my first point, namely that we should simply have restitution of the full amount of the fee. One final point I should make before diving into my submissions in detail, is that our arguments do not depend on the fact that we currently hold the money. So as it happens, Westminster gave us a refund already, they gave us that refund after the decision of the Court of Appeal, so the money's currently in our hands, but we do not place any reliance on that. The question for this court, in my submission, is simply whether the state of the law, as we now know it to be, namely that the Type B scheme that Westminster in fact operated was unlawful, but that they could have operated a Type A scheme lawfully, means that we have a San Giorgio claim for full restitution of the unlawful fees we paid under the Type B scheme that they in fact operated, and I say it does. Turning then to my submissions on EU law, and I'll start with...
Perhaps your submission, I mean, that combines a submission that it's irrelevant that you've received the money back, with a submission that they can't recover the money paid back, but if it's irrelevant that they have repaid you, perhaps you ought to be considering the position if they hadn't repaid you.
I'm very happy, I'm happy to go ahead on that basis, my lord. We simply say it's irrelevant, that's what I meant to say, and if I didn't express myself clearly, I'm sorry. We say it's irrelevant that we've got the money presently, treat this as a claim for our restitution of the money, as if they were holding it presently, that's what I'm saying, thank you. The EU law cases. San Giorgio, your lordships know very well, we don't need to turn it up. The Court of Justice, considering charges, not taxes, they were charges for health inspections imposed at the border, said in paragraph 12, "It must be pointed out that entitlement to the repayment of charges levied by a member state contrary to the rules of community law is a consequence of and an adjunct to the rights conferred on individuals by the community provisions prohibiting charges having an effect equivalent to customs duties, or, as the case may be, the discriminatory application of internal taxes." So you do have San Giorgio in your bundles, it's in tab 24 in volume 6, but I'm sure your lordships don't...
624.
624, yes, I'm sure your lordships...
And what was that paragraph?
Paragraph 12.
Thank you.
And of course, in fact, that idea that any charge which has been unlawfully levied should be reimbursed, comes from earlier cases, comma tab, but of course in this jurisdiction we tend to refer to it as San Giorgio, and we call it the San Giorgio cause of action, even in recent cases. It's been repeatedly reaffirmed in subsequent case law. Weber's Wine World is the next case to which I would like to draw your lordship's attention. That's in tab 25 of volume 6. Again, I don't need to take your lordships to it. In paragraph 93 of that decision, the court reaffirmed the basic San Giorgio principle, that formula, but now it called reimbursement the consequence and the complement of the rights, rather than consequence and adjunct to. And it says the member state in question is therefore required to repay charges levied in breach of community law. Paragraph 94 is the one which I would like you to make a note of, if I may.
Where are we now, which...
We're in Weber's Wine World.
You're going wrong too far.
I'm going too quick, I'm sorry, I'm very conscious of...
16th tab 25, page 1918.
I should like to look at it, because I feel I wouldn't be able to remember it.
I'm just very conscious of time, because we only have half a day and I have EU law...
16th 25, page 1918.
How much time have you given yourself, as a matter of your side?
So we have half a day, we're roughly aiming to be an hour between us, and I've roughly got 30 minutes for the EU law restitution, and if your lordships want to hear me on it, the common law. So 1918, as my lord, Lord Newberger says, paragraph 94, and the reason I wanted to direct your lordship's attention to this is it's the first time we see the reference to there being only one exception to the obligation to make repayment. It's in the first sentence of paragraph 94. According to the case law, there is only one exception to that obligation to make repayment. "A member state may resist repayment to the trader of a charge levied, though not due, only where it is established by the national authorities that the charge has been borne in its entirety by someone other than the taxable person, that reimbursement of the charge would constitute unjust enrichment of the latter." It follows that if the burden has been passed on only in part, then you do have to make restitution of the part that wasn't passed on. So that's the first time we see the reference to only one exception, and it's to pass on.
Quite a lot may attach to the word "not due."
Not due, exactly, that's in our case, my lord, not due.
Well, it slightly depends on how you interpret due, but what was this? This was duties which were simply not due, full stop. There was no basis on which they could or should have been charged, is that right?
I think that's right, sorry, I'm going to have...
Due to alcohol or beverages, contrary to community law, that's right. Wasn't a question of timing or the nature of the method by which they were recovered?
No, my lord, and in one of the cases that I'm going to take you to, is that a question about the sense in which the fee was not due, but in my submission, and I don't want to get ahead on myself, but in our case, we say the fee was not due, that the Article 13.2 prohibition barred wholly and entirely the charging of the fee at the point that it was charged to us. It was not due. And whether we think of 13.2 as a timing provision, in the sense that it prohibits charging something upfront that later could have been charged, or a status provision in that it prohibits charging to an applicant a fee which one could have charged to a licensee, or one could say it's an access to the market, or a barrier to entry prohibition, because it applies only to those seeking first entry to a market, and not to those who already know that they can be established in the market because they've received an authorisation. However, one characterises the 13.2 prohibition, it absolutely prohibits the charging of a fee in the way that it was charged to us.
No, we know that. Could the fee have been charged in a manner which was compatible with EU law, under domestic law?
As a matter of domestic law, your lordships held, in your previous judgment in this case, that it could have been, yes.
So a Type A scheme would have been available under domestic law.
That was in your lordship's judgement, yes.
What is surely illegitimate is the charging in advance on the application, but can you not divide the scheme into two? Because as we said in our judgment, paragraph 23, when the application succeeds, the payment becomes due unconditionally. Could you not say that what European law strikes at is the payment before the application succeeds?
No, my lord, because then too much turns on the time at which we exercise our EU law rights. So if we were charged the application fee unlawfully, and we'd immediately rushed to court, and said, "We assert our San Giorgio rights to a refund, refund us that money now", they would have had to have refunded that money to us, we would have had it back.
Could they have said, or is this the same question that we're debating now in different clothes, could they have said, "We will refund it to you, but only on terms that if you get your licence, you pay it to us"?
No, they couldn't have, because that wasn't the charging scheme in force. I mean, we're in some difficulty here, because of course we know...
In real life, that would happen. If the point is tested after the money in truth became due. So it was unlawfully when it was first paid over, it was unlawful, but by the time the matter came to the court, it was already due and that was accepted, then there would be some kind of set-off, could there?
My lord, it wasn't due. Under the regime, there was no facility for imposing a charge on a licensee. There was one upfront fee, and that was it. We paid once and once only at the beginning. If that money had been refunded, under the regime as they in fact operated, the Type B scheme, they had no power to...
It would have to be a Type A scheme.
Pardon?
It would have to be a Type A scheme.
It would have to have been a Type A scheme, which they didn't in fact operate, and that's the question before your lordships, whether they should be able to say hypothetically it was open to us to behave lawfully, we could have devised a scheme, of course they could have, that would have levied this charge from us.
If they'd said, the position is as follows, that there's an application fee for processing, and there's a fee due for a licence if granted, and as a matter of practice, we require the latter to be paid together with the former to guarantee payment. Would not European law or any domestic legal system have said, "Right, the requirement of payment in advance is invalid, but the, once the licence is granted, that stands by itself"?
If that had been the scheme that they'd operated, yes.
It's a technical matter, isn't that the substance of the present scheme in reality?
It's not the substance of the scheme, no. There was one charging event at the beginning, it was an application fee. The whole way through the litigation, in this case, it's always been the position that there was one upfront fee. They've never said, "Oh no, in fact, there was a second fee", until this issue was developed in this court, in the High Court and the Court of Appeal, and it's well established in all the documents, there was one fee, it was paid upfront. And I appreciate, I take your lordship's point, that we are in this case, one side of a line, that with a bit of a push, we'd fall onto the other side of. Nevertheless, we're on the side of the line where in fact the scheme that they...
Isn't there an air of Alice... There's an air of Alice in Wonderland about all this,
Well, my lord, with respect...
Can I ask, I mean, you're focusing at the moment on EU law, and if I'm following the argument, the gist of it is, the CJEU has only permitted one exception to a San Giorgio, well, one defence to a San Giorgio claim, which is passing on effectively.
Of course, and they've cast it as an exception rather than a defence, in fact, so maybe like a defence on domestic law.
And that's not available on the facts of this case. But I'm wondering, are you also going to be going into, as a matter of domestic public law, that there might be thought to be an issue also, if a scheme that's in place is ultra vires, and the money's been levied under an ultra vires scheme, well, can a right to retain the money properly be asserted in that situation, on the footing that, well, if we'd done it properly and had an intra vires scheme, we could have levied the same amounts?
Quite, my lord, and those are the very concerns that are suggested in respect of the Waikato case by Goffin Jones. But your lordships are of course right, that moving away from, I suppose, a pure unjust enrichment restitutionary kind of...
Yes, that's really what I'm trying to make, that, I mean, one can look at this as a matter of ordinary private law of unjust enrichment, but it's got two layers on top of that. One is domestic public law, and the other is EU law.
Well, of course, my lord, I will gratefully adopt the suggestion that as a matter of public law, it must be at the very least highly questionable whether a public authority can levy a fee on an unlawful basis, and then subsequently seek to assert, "Oh, because I would actually have had a lawful basis available to me, I can nevertheless retain that money." And if I may marry that point together with my answer to my lord, Lord Clark's question, I think that's maybe the answer to the Alice in Wonderland, or Alice through the looking glass point, that in cases where a public authority has open to it, an entirely lawful alternative basis for doing that, which it in fact did unlawfully, one could always say, "Well, it's Alice in Wonderland, well, it doesn't look to the reality of the situation." But in fact, it does look to the reality of what the public authority did, and if a public authority wants to levy charges on individuals or on businesses, it should do so lawfully. That's certainly the approach at the EU law level, and I would suggest it's also the approach as a matter of domestic law.
I mean, if you're thinking about the public law aspects of this, if one took a simpler case, if this were a tax, then I'd have thought under domestic public law, there could be no question of hanging on to money which had been unlawfully levied as a tax, because there would then be taxation without parliamentary consent.
And similarly, of course, local authorities don't have a right to levy a charge without a statutory basis.
Well, that's the next stage, I'll just...
I thought it might be, yes. So it's exactly the same logic.
There's a statutory basis, isn't there, in this case, for any sort of scheme, including what you would accept as a legal scheme?
There is, there's a broad vires to charge a reasonable fee, but of course then you do have to look at what fee they were in fact charging, and if they were in fact charging fee, Type B fee, they can't say, "Oh no, actually, it occurs to us now, it would have been better if we charged Type A fee, so can we pretend we were charging Type A fee all along"? That's not open to them.
Yeah, I mean, effectively, you're saying that these fees were not charged in a manner authorised by parliament?
Yes, my lord.
You've said there was one scheme throughout, which is correct, but the charge was a charge in two parts from the outset, wasn't it? Integral to the scheme was that the lion's share was refundable.
My lord, I wouldn't say it was in two parts. I'd say there were two events. The first event was a charging event, where they could take the money off us, and the second event was a refund event, where they could get it back. But that second event wasn't the charging of a fee on us, a successful applicant, a second time.
But the refundability of that part was part of the scheme, was it not?
Refundability was part of the scheme, so it's true that's an unsuccessful applicant to get that back.
So we've got one scheme, which has a refundable and a non-refundable part. The non-refundable was lawful anyway. In relation to the refundable part, isn't the substance of the illegality, the charging upfront on a refundable basis? And if that is the substance of the illegality, then when they have been successful and time has marched on, where lies the justice of your clients retaining the money? Doesn't the justice have to reflect what was the substance of the illegality?
No, my lord, I'd say first of all, that the justice when one's operating in an EU law sphere like this, and the policy decisions, if I may put it that way, have been decided, and they've been decided by the Grand Chamber in Lady and Kid. And in Lady and Kid, they effectively said, in a case, it may help if we open up Lady and Kid, and I can take you through the relevant paragraphs, but they said in a case where refunding the unlawful tax absolutely definitely would have enriched the taxpayer. The taxpayer in fact had ended up quid's up anyway, and they were seeking the reimbursement of an unlawful tax contrary to EU law, and Denmark went to the Grand Chamber and said, "Is it really the case that following San Giorgio, we have to reimburse this fee, even though in fact because of concomitant abolitions in other levies at the same time, the claimants ended up already making money out of the scheme?" And the Grand Chamber said, "Yes, that is the position. We have taken a policy decision, a justice decision, I would suggest, my lord, that when one is dealing with EU law, unlawful fees are reimbursed, and the reason for that..."
That's because in substance they were unlawful, on the basis on which they were charged. I mean, there's a slight difference, isn't there, between a counterfactual which consists of a legislation which has been abolished, which has been repealed, separate legislation which has been repealed, which imposed taxes on a completely different basis, and the present case where, as my law points out, as the agreed statement of fact in this view says, the fee charge was X made up of two sums, £2,667 relating to the administration of the application and non-return were refundable, and £26,000 for the management of the licence regime, which was refundable if the application was refused. So the substance of the scheme is, as he's putting, two parts, and the substance of the scheme is one where the second part is due. It's unfortunately required to be paid as a mechanism at an inappropriate stage.
My lord, we would say it was due at the first stage, it wasn't due subsequently. At the point of success, if for an unsuccessful applicant, the fee was refunded, but our fee didn't suddenly become due at that point.
But do you mean, I mean, it's difficult, there are no findings of fact about it, but supposing the council had said, "Look, we realise you've got cash flow problems, we're only in charge, £2,667 happens at this stage, we'll charge the rest when the application's granted, if it is granted." Couldn't they have done that?
They could have, and that would have been a different regime, that would have been a Type C regime.
Well, wouldn't the scheme have covered that? Couldn't they, supposing they just forgotten to charge the larger sum, are you saying that they couldn't have charged it when they're granting an application?
My lord, when you filled in an application form for this licence, you had to pay an application fee that went with the licence. That application fee was £29,000, that's what we in fact paid upfront.
But supposing they'd processed it, that you people had submitted a cheque for £2,667, saying, "We protest about the requirement at this stage to pay the remainder", and couldn't they then, if they granted the licence, have said, "Now you must pay the remainder"?
They could have done, but they didn't.
No, no, but you would have to say surely that there's no legal basis for them doing that, it wasn't due, because the only basis on which the scheme provided for it to be due was in advance.
Well, they obviously would have had to have established that scheme lawfully, and of course, one of the wrinkles with this case is that the scheme that they in fact operated for domestic law reasons wasn't lawfully established, because they didn't meet the requirement to determine the fee and so on. So we're really in an Alice in Wonderland world of thinking about how it is that they set up their different regimes. But I would say it's within their vires to have set up a regime like that, and doubtless if they'd have contacted us and said, "Actually, you don't need to pay the fee that we've said you need to pay, that we've said as a precondition for us even examining your application, that we've never suggested might actually only be truly payable later", actually we've changed our minds, I'm sure we would have thought, "Well, that sounds perfect", but they didn't. And why I keep on referring to...
You're saying that they could have done that simply as a matter of feeling, they could have done it without having a sort of formal rules about it?
No, they would need to have had formal rules, I imagine. My learned friend, Mr Colvin, is dealing with the facts in more detail, but the difficulty in this case is that they didn't have sufficiently formal rules anyway, and that's one of the things that they have to go back and do.
Really, that they couldn't have done it in this case, because it would have required regulations?
Yes, they would have needed a different charging basis, I imagine. I don't want to speak beyond what I understand of the facts of the case.
So the answer is, they couldn't have done what's suggested, without having had regulations?
I'm not sure whether regime B was established by regulations or not, I'm not sure what it is that gave rise to that.
Certainly if they'd operated a different scheme, they'd had to identify the different scheme, but...
But regime B...
But, 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 there's seen to me, arguably, that even with the broadest statements of the European Court, as with any other court, one has to look at the context, and one has to look at the substance of the matter. And what we're endeavouring to do is to look at this scheme and identify what was the substance of the illegality, in order to determine where the justice lies in relation to restitution.
Of course, my lord.
Well, I wonder if you're perhaps conceding that too readily. I mean, just say, for example, there was, well, to say the justice of the matter is the determining factor is really to give away a great deal of your argument, I would have thought. I mean, you're saying that regardless of the justice, as a matter of domestic law, this was an ultra vires scheme, and money is paid under it, cannot be retained by the body, and the justice of it is really neither here nor there. I mean, it might be, for example, that services had been rendered in return for the money, which would go to the justice of it, but wouldn't, to your argument, to whether or not reimbursement was due. And under EU law, who knows what the CJEU might think about the relevance of justice to the obligation to repay money that's levied in breach of EU law?
I'm very grateful for that.
I mean, they would see this, I would have thought, not in terms of justice, but in terms of the proper working of the market, and they would say, if you levy money, well, you might say, that if money is levied contrary to EU law, that's a market distortion which ought to be corrected by restitution.
Absolutely, my lord, and in fact, another point which I wanted to make in my submission...
It may depend when you're testing it all. It may depend when you're testing each of these questions. I mean, if you're testing it at the moment of payment, then one can see that, someone can say, "Well, you never know what might, you miss refunded". But if you were testing it after there had become an obligation to pay, because by this time it was in truth of B scheme, then it would be very odd.
This isn't simply a case of a private company charging somebody on a wrong basis, and then saying, "Well, I'll charge you on a different basis". This is a public body which can only charge in accordance with its rules, regulations. So if I was talking about the justice of the case, I suppose you say that they couldn't have said, "Well, all right, we'll charge you at a later stage if you get the consent", because that wasn't something they could do, because they hadn't...
Well, of course, it's a public body, however they make their rules, whatever the provisions are that apply to how they make their rules, they would always have to abide by those provisions unlike a private body.
But I think you have to show us a little, I mean, that they are bound by rules in the way suggested. I'm not sure we have sufficient findings, but the scheme is set out, so far as we know it, in the original statement of facts and issues, which one can find on the internet, I don't think we've got it in our bundles. The, at first instance, there have been orders, despite the invalidity of the, general invalidity of the process by which the scheme was established, that reasonable fees should be paid. What was the jurisprudential basis for those orders, and why aren't they equally applicable in the present situation? I mean, if you can order a reasonable fee to be paid in respect of applications, why can't you order it in respect of grants of licence?
My lord, could I return to that question in a moment, when I've just finished dealing with 13.2, because that's a Waikato question, I think, and that was the jurisprudential basis, and we say that's very different from what's being considered in the issues before your court today. Alternatively, I can deal with it now, your lordship's looking at it as if you were much harder.
We're taking you so far out of your way that...
No, 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 that's, that's absolutely fine. One thing I wanted to say was that, my recollection was that in your lordship's judgement below, that you said a Type B scheme was common. In paragraph three of your judgement below, which is in tab 19, of the first volume, you cite Hutton, which of course was tried together with Quirrell in the mid-1980s for this practice of charging upfront, then refunding the second part of the fee. So it does appear that a Type B scheme was absolutely well-established practice, it was how Westminster, for Westminster was the defendant, the respondent in those claims as well, is how they go about charging licence fees, to sex shops at least.
Yeah, so I mean, the scheme which was in fact operated appears to be quite informal, but sex shop operators must have been taken to be aware of it, and it must have been enforceable in public law.
Yes, my lord, those were your findings.
Yeah, right.
Something I wanted to say about 13.2, and picking up my lord, Lord Reed's point about...
13.2 is what, 13.2 of what?
It's the Services Directive, it's the relevant to EU law prohibition.
Where do we find that? We don't seem to have got the Services, we've got it in the judgement, of course.
It will be in your judgement.
Yes, right. Right?
So in page, it's paragraph 10, oh no, sorry, it's the 9. So in page, it's paragraph 10, oh no, sorry, it's nine. Paragraph nine, and it's set out there, authorisation procedures and formalities shall not be dissuasive and shall not unduly complicate or delay the provision of the service, they shall be easily accessible, and, here we go, any charges which the applicants may incur from their application shall be reasonable and proportionate to the cost of the authorisation procedures in question, and shall not exceed the costs of those procedures.
Yeah.
And we now know that that means that you can't charge for enforcement costs upfront to an applicant, that's what that means. And my Lord Reed suggested that if this were to go to Luxembourg, the Luxembourg Court might think, well, this is a very important provision, actually, because it's a provision which prevents market distortion. That's certainly the view that was taken in the judgment of the Court of Justice in this case, in the response to your lordship's reference. They said it was irrelevant that the fee was refundable. If I can just take your lordship's there, that is volume two of the bundles for today's hearing, tab 35, paragraph 28. The court said, in that regard, it must be noted at the outset that whether the fee payable by an applicant is refundable when his licence application is rejected, has no bearing on ascertaining whether there is a charge within the meaning of Article 13-2 of the Services Directive. The fact that a fee must be paid constitutes a financial obligation and therefore a charge which the applicant must pay in order for his application to be considered, notwithstanding the fact that the amount may subsequently be refunded if that application is rejected. This is true, all the more so, given that the objective of Article 13-2, read in the light of recitals 39, 42 and 43 of that directive, is to preclude certain aspects of the authorisation procedures and formalities from discouraging access to services activities. And so the court says, well, it's irrelevant, it's refundable, but they also highlight the objective of the prohibition.
Can I just ask you, reading what the court says, and it's saying that, I mean, obviously applicants for a licence or for the renewal of a licence can't be charged deep amounts. Now, the domestic provision under which the local authority adopted their scheme, paragraph 19 of the Schedule III to the 1982 Act, says that an applicant for the grant, renewal or transfer of a licence shall pay a reasonable fee. What basis would there be for adopting an EU-compliant scheme under article, under paragraph, well, if there isn't one under paragraph 19, because that's, it's hypothesised to do with charging applicants. Whereas, I mean, if you're going to have an EU-compliant scheme, as I understand it, you're not charging applicants, you would have to charge holders of licences a fee in respect of the cost of the services being provided to operate the regulatory arrangements.
Yes, my lord, that's always been our view of the viaries, actually. We thought that we'd lost that point in front of this court at the last hearing. If we haven't, that remains our view of the viaries. And that was always why this case was put in the High Court and at the Court of Appeal, on the basis that enforcement costs were either lawfully included or unlawfully included. But we never thought that there was an alternative basis on which they could be charged. We thought that point had been decided against us. If not, we will gratefully adopt it. Again, we do say that it only arises in respect of applicants. Now, my lord, what I was going to say about 13-2 in particular-
Well, I mean, I think, are you accepting? Because we'd have to look at the judgment, but I think on one view, the judgment did decide that a type A scheme could be operated under domestic law.
That's how we read it, and that's certainly how Westminster is going about its business now, under that provision. That isn't how we read the provision, and those were part submissions.
Originally, no, it wasn't originally.
No, nor were those our submissions to this court, from my recollection.
Now, we see that.
I believe that those were rejected in the course of the hearing. What I was going to say about Article 13-2 was just that it can't be entirely discounted, that Article 13-2 may actually have some impact and may actually do that which it is intended to do, namely to lower barriers to entry. So imagine a world in which, in fact, the only fee that had been charged upfront was the £2,500. Perhaps there would have been more applicants, perhaps more of the applicants would have succeeded, perhaps more licences would have been granted. In that case, the second part of the fee would have been lower, because Westminster isn't allowed to make a profit, it's only allowed to recover its costs, and so it divides up those costs over the total number of licence holders. So your lordships have that point. It isn't simply a case of knowing upfront at the beginning of the process how many people will succeed through the application process, taking that same amount of money off them at the back end, because depending how many people get through, it may be a different amount of money. I was going to take your lordship's turn, Lady and Kid. I will open it up. It is, gone ahead in my notes. It will be in volume six, 27.
Thank you. You're in slight time difficulties, aren't you, because we've been asking you a lot of questions?
I am, I am. And so I will take this as quickly as I can.
It was said sympathetically, not quickly.
Your lordships already have the factual point, that the companies in question were going to be enriched by the reimbursement of the tax which they sought.
Yeah.
And the court, in its reasoning, Grand Chamber, in paragraph 20, which is at 1961, says in the second sentence, the direct passing on to the purchaser of tax wrongly levied constitutes the sole exception to the right to reimbursement of tax. It then, in the next few paragraphs, and in particular paragraph 25, refers to two older cases, Macarren, which is also, its long title is The Pigs and Bacon Authority in Macarren, and Apple and Pear. Now, the reason I draw those cases to your lordship's attention is that my learned friend relies on those cases in his written argument in paragraphs 54, 55 and 64D. Those cases did appear to allow for some form of set-off as a defence or to resist restitution, and the court essentially overrules them. It says, this conclusion cannot be called into question by those cases. And at the end of that paragraph, it reaffirms its decision in paragraph 20 of this judgment. So in my submission, my learned friend is wrong to seek to resurrect that on the case law. Paragraph 26, we see the conclusion, recovery of sums wrongly paid can only give rise to unjust enrichment only when the amounts wrongly paid have been passed on direct to the purchaser. I should also say that in Lady and Kid, the Advocate General opined differently to the court. He suggested that, in fact, there was an underlying principle of a defence of unjust enrichment in EU law, and that in general, a member state could resist San Giorgio refund on the basis that, in fact, it would be contrary to justice.
Who was the Advocate General?
It was, I'm going to mangle the pronunciation, Villalon, Viayon, I don't know how you say it, but-
Oh, Villalon, yes.
Yeah. And again, my learned friend relies on the opinion of the Advocate General in paragraph 66 of his submissions, and he says that the Grand Chamber's decision was not incompatible with the Advocate General's careful exposition of the principles underlying EU law in this field. And that's the 60D of his submissions. We say, I'm afraid that that's wrong, the conclusion of the Grand Chamber is entirely at odds with the Advocate General's opinion and with any wider notion that San Giorgio-
Which paragraph of the opinion is it?
And so, that is my learned friend's written submissions, paragraphs 60D of his submissions, which are at the end of volume two.
But which paragraph of the Advocate General's opinion?
It's paragraph 66, the Advocate General, I take that from my learned friend's submissions.
67.
And 67.
Yep. Yep.
So, very conscious of time, my lords, you have my submissions as a matter of EU law, that the fee was unlawfully levied, it falls squarely within the formulation of San Giorgio. Was the fee unlawfully levied? Yes, it was. It was levied only once, we say. The other side should not be able to take the benefit of, in fact, having it in their hands still at the point of success, because we could have asked for it to be refunded the moment it was paid, we could have resisted payment, and they would have needed to charge it at that second point. They didn't do so, it wasn't part of their, they should do so. They shouldn't, as a policy matter, have the benefit of being able to say, oh, in fact, we could have done so. And we say that we know that they shouldn't be able to do that, it's a policy question because of Lady and Kid. I'm now going to make a submission that I'm sure would be very unwelcome, a reference. Your lordships are all too aware, of course, of the obligation on this court to refer a question of EU law, where the answer is not so obvious.
I don't have to take time on the-
And so, as ever, I say I'm at clear. If what I say is not at clear, I say you need to refer.
Yes, yes, we understand that.
Of course.
Don't ask me why you think it should be unwelcome.
See how many times we can go to Luxembourg before we're not allowed to go there anymore.
Very well.
The common law, I say that the common law approach to restitution is irrelevant. Now, I could, if I had more time, make lengthy submissions on Waikato and on the old doctrine of clori officiae, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, and why it is that if this were to be an entirely domestic case, we should still receive restitution under Woolwich principles of the money that we paid in response to an unlawful demand. I don't have very much time, I don't want to get into the weeds of that, because I just say it's simply irrelevant. EU law tells us everything we need to know. I will, however, address the question that was asked by my Lord, Lord Mans, which was the juridical basis for what happened below in redetermining the fee. Now, this claim, when it was brought, was brought on various different grounds, two domestic grounds and one EU law ground. The domestic grounds were a failure to determine the fee, a failure to take surpluses and deficits into account on an annual basis, and the unlawful inclusion of enforcement costs. By the time we got to your lordship's court, only that last point was live.
What was the last point?
And the unlawful inclusion of enforcement costs, so the Services Directive.
Yeah, quite right, but it's only got to us, of course, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, so that was the question before your lordship's court. It was conceded, in fact, it was our pleaded claim, that for the domestic law illegality, Westminster should be able to go back and determine the fee lawfully. And the reason that the case was put that way was under this principle of clori officiae or Waikato, so namely that where there is an available lawful fee, they should be able to go back and redetermine it. No concessions were made, no argument was made whatsoever about the issue before your lordship's court today, namely what one does in the face of an EU law illegality. No concession was made or determination made in respect of whether they could have established a different regime in terms of charging points. That point simply wasn't ventilated. And that's why we say, and we haven't conceded these points, we obviously haven't conceded Lady and Kid and San Giorgio, it's never been mentioned before. We haven't conceded type A, type B, and your lordship's thought of those options. That's why we say these points are live to you. I would dearly love to address you more on Waikato, but I know we're short on time. So I will, unless I can assist your lordship's further, sit down. I'm sorry that was so fast, I hope it was vaguely comprehensible.
Well, Waikato does suggest there's a general principle at common law, if it's right, that you can look at what could and should have happened.
I don't say that's right, my lord. So I say that if one looks back at the clori officiae cases, what one sees is that where there is a fee charged, part of it is lawful, part of it is unlawful. The common law allows the public body that levied the charge to retain the lawful fee. So in Steele and Williams, which is the parish clerk case, where a lawful fee was charged for inspecting the register, an unlawful fee was charged for making an extract of the register, that's the first clori officiae case, and that stands for the proposition that the parish clerk could retain the fee for inspection, because that was lawfully levied, but had to pay back the fee for making your own copy, that was unlawfully levied.
I don't think the board in Waikato didn't like analysing the fee which was charged into a lawful and unlawful element, did it?
It didn't, but it was a discrimination case, my lord. And both Waikato and South of Scotland, which is the other main case, they were both discrimination cases, where of course it's essentially impossible to determine what the unlawful element of the fee is, unless you know what a non-discriminatory fee would be. And by its very nature, we all know discrimination can be levied up, levelled up, it can be levelled down, you can take different things into account, and so you really need the public authority to go away and do that exercise again before you know what the quantum of restitution is. That's not our case. It's not a discrimination case, we know what the quantum of the unlawful fee was, it was £26,500 per shop each year. So we're just not in a position where there's any need to allow them to go away and conduct that exercise. So in fact, I don't say that Waikato suggests that the common law would assist my learned friends, but of course I say the common law is irrelevant anyway, because San Giorgio tells us what should happen.
Thank you very much, please.
Thank you.
My lords, I have two tasks. First, if the court is against us on whether the fee's calculation for 2010 to 12 should be reopened, there are issues as to the scope of the calculation which now needs to be undertaken. And secondly, I must deal with costs. Lords, to stay within time, I shall give you page references, but I'll only take you to the documents in a small number of cases, unless, of course, you wish to see the document in question. One document I will keep coming back to, we've had put before, your lordships, is in fact in your bundle B, page 618, that I hope is loose on the desk in front of you, because I will keep coming back to it. This was placed in front of the Admin Court by Westminster City Council. So, my lords, the calculation. We say there are four issues. The first issue is a factual one, what were the reasonable enforcement costs for 2010, 11 and 12? And can I tell, my lords, that looking at this spreadsheet, in fact, for none of those years have the actual figures for enforcement relied on by the council here been before, let alone approved by the statutory decision-maker, which is the Licensing Committee of the Council. For none of those years have the figures been approved by the court. And as you can see, for only one of those years, 2010, 11, was the alleged enforcement cost even given. And of course, Mr Justice Keith didn't need to rule on its accuracy or reasonableness for two reasons. One is because he held that the fee for that year, and indeed all years since the last determination, had to be determined by the council, having not been determined previously at all. And secondly, even then, it had to be determined minus the enforcement costs post-stating the directive. We ourselves were only given the alleged enforcement costs for 11 and 12 in February of this year, with no underlying justification or evidential support. And of course, that's not how the system of determining licensing fees is supposed to work. So we say the actual fee relating to enforcement costs for those three years needs to be determined, just as it needed to be determined for all the other costs following the ruling of the Court of Appeal. And we say that in determining the fees, there are three questions. The first is, is the statement of the cost factually correct? How has it been calculated, based on what evidence and so forth?
Understand.
Secondly, is it reasonable, which is the requirement under Schedule III, paragraph 19? And thirdly, perhaps less attractive, my lords, is the quantum proportionate within Article 16? That's something that the decision-maker has to consider and has not occurred.
So what you think should be done, then?
It should be sent back in the same way as all the other fees for determination.
Thank you.
My lords, I don't know how much more I need to say about this, but-
Well, I think the sensible thing to do is, if you're happy to stop it there, on the basis that you can come back if something's said that you need to deal with in reply.
I've got a lot more to be said, it seems rather obvious.
The basic points are quite clear.
I'll pass on, and that saves rather a lot of time.
This is to remit it to, this is for the, going back to the court or back to the-
Well, my lords, in the way, the history of this is that in front of Mr Justice Keith, we said we are so distrust- we said we are so distrustful of these figures that, in fact, there should be an account taken by the Court. Mr. Justice Keith, paragraph 31 of his judgment, said that our criticisms were compelling, but nonetheless, it was axiomatic that it should go back before the decision-maker, which is Westminster City Council, and that's what he ordered. Now, I've just noted that in Westminster's submissions, they seem content for this work to be done by the Admin Court, presumably on the basis that the Admin Court could work out what the reasonable adjustment would be. We'd be happy for that, because it would save an awful lot of further litigation. But on the axiomatic principle, it would go back before the Council.
But what you're saying is it goes back to the Admin Court judge, and it's really he decides then, or she decides then, whether they do it or whether it goes...
Yes, yes, okay.
But what you're saying is it's not something we, because of the three factors you've identified, it's not something we can deal with. We have to send...
You couldn't possibly, my Lord. The second issue is that if the account is to be reopened, we say it should be reconsidered in the round. Lords, as you know, under the Court of Appeal...
How do you answer the point which is made against you, that we decided this wasn't open to you in paragraph 25 of our judgment? Because you tried to raise it before us as a matter of principle and/or on the facts of the case that they were...
Well, my Lords, what in fact happened in this case is that we put up a whole number of criticisms of these figures. And Mr. Justice Keith said, no, it's not for the Court to decide the reasonableness of these figures. It's for Westminster, and it was remitted to Westminster. What then happened was that, subsequent to the hearing in front of the Supreme Court, you asked us for submissions in relation to proportionality. And we put all these arguments in front of you again, and you said, well, these all should have been pleaded. The fact was that these fees had never been determined. These figures we haven't seen, the 2011, 2012 figures. And the view of Mr. Justice Keith is the figures are going to be claimed, they have to be assessed, and the party assessing them has to be Westminster City Council. So, I'm not here arguing that these figures are disproportionate and have to be discounted altogether, which was the argument we were making in response to my Lord's invitation after the last hearing. We're simply saying they haven't been assessed.
But if the judge has decided they should be determined by Westminster City Council, why should we send it back to the judge?
Lord, the logic of Mr. Justice Keith's judgment is that it goes back to Westminster City Council.
Right. So, what I'm saying is, why are you saying it should go back to the judge?
Inevitably, if the Lord approaches this from the same point of view as the judgment in Hutton and the judgment of Mr. Justice Keith, it's back to Westminster City Council. There's no question about that at all. It is simply that Westminster, in their written submissions to the Court, appeared content for the matter to go back to the judge.
Speaking for myself at the moment, it seems to me that if Westminster's not content, then the judge understands it goes back to Westminster. If Westminster and you are both content for it to go back to the judge, and you formally agree that, then I would have thought we would argue. That's how it seems to me.
I respectfully entirely agree.
Well, let's leave that for the moment. See what's said against you in agreement with you and see where we go.
But the one thing which can't happen, my Lord, is for fees to be demanded without ever having been assessed.
But it's just for those three years, though.
Just for those three years.
Ten, eleven, and twelve.
Well, that's what Westminster are claiming.
Yeah.
Can I then move on to my second submission?
Yes, of course.
Which is that if the account is to be reopened, then the account should be reconsidered in the round for this reason. Lords, as you know, under the Court of Appeal order, the 2010 reassessment of the fees had to take account of previous surpluses and deficits. Now, we have seen no evidence underlying the figures on this spreadsheet for those earlier years. And as you can see, my Lords, the figures include, for example, £487,000 for enforcement in 2008, '09, and so on. There are a number of questions raised. When the fees were determined in 2013, following the Court of Appeal judgment...
Sorry, where is that figure that you...
Well, my Lords, the figures that concern enforcement are the first, second, third, fourth, fifth column, actual charge for enforcement.
Yes.
And you can see that they vary from £342,000 to £121,000, although there's more to say about that, £487,000, and so forth. We were always extremely worried about those figures, because they weren't supported by any evidence, schedules of litigation costs, the contracts of the employees involved, evidence that they were actually engaged full-time on enforcement. It was said there were five people engaged full-time on enforcement, and the cost of those five people was half a million pounds a year. We'd simply had no way of testing that, and we were seriously concerned about it. But when the fees were determined by Westminster in 2013, my clients had a difficult weighing task at that stage to decide whether to challenge them. Because at that stage, they'd received a notice of appeal to this Court, and so were facing the prospect of further litigation. But they'd also received a million pounds in their hands. And so, in the light of that, my clients were reluctant to open up a yet further litigation front mid-litigation, which is perhaps to be applauded. However, if at the end of this case, this account is to be reopened, and money in respect of 10, 11, and 12 is repaid, they ought in fairness to be allowed to make any points about the account. They shouldn't be precluded from doing so. I mean, one of the many things which has happened is that Westminster have succeeded in reducing their costs of enforcement from about £60,000 per shop then, in 2012, to £20,000 per shop now, having reorganised their... Sorry, to £6,000 a shop now, having effectively re-engineered their department so as to save costs. We know that now as a point of evidence. And so, we do say that we ought to be able to look at that account again in the round. If Westminster can justify the figures, all well and good. If they can't, they shouldn't have more for my clients than they can actually justify. So, that's our second point, is we say the account should be opened in the round.
Can I just interrupt you to just be sure I'm understanding? The problem under EU law, am I right in thinking, only affects the years ending 2011 and 2012?
And 2013.
And 2013, yes.
Yes.
And so far as those three years are concerned, is it your position that it remains open to the Council to take an EU-compliant decision in relation to fees?
My Lord, no. What Miss Wakefield addressed you upon is that it shouldn't go back. It shouldn't be reopened. So, my submissions are predicated on my Lords having found against us so that it has to go back. And so, what I'm saying is if it goes back, Westminster have got to determine what a reasonable fee would have been.
Yes. Normally, if a decision were ultra-varys, it would go back to the decision-maker to take a lawful decision.
Yes. And I'm certainly conceding that, unless there is an agreement between the parties that the High Court should take on the task.
Yes. Yes. In which event, rather than the Council seeking repayment now of the money, they would take a proper decision as to what fees were payable in respect of those years and charge you those amounts.
Exactly. And then the account would be adjusted, which is what happened with all the other costs for all the other years.
Yes.
We say that they should determine the fee, and in doing that, they have to take account of previous surpluses and deficits. They just redo the exercise.
Yep.
Can I just get clear? The years challenged are the ones ending 11, 12, and 13.
It's a bit confusing, because we use different terminology, but it's 10, 11, 11, 12, and 12, 13.
Yeah. We haven't got 12, 13 on this.
No, because it came before Mr. Justice Keith in the spring of 2012. By the time we got in front of Mr. Justice Keith a couple of days before, we saw an estimated figure for the current year, but we didn't see an actual figure for the current year until a couple of months ago.
And your first point, what were the reasonable enforcement costs, which years did that relate to?
Those years, 10, 11, 11, 12.
Ah, I see. Sorry, I've got it, yeah. 10 to 11, yeah.
10 to... So, I'm so...
Yep. 10, 11, 11, 12, 12, 13. Okay, thank you.
My Lords, that's the second point. The third point is this. Westminster accidentally paid us too much money, having done the recalculation, and they want it back. Now, that was the subject of correspondence, which I don't need to take you to, but it's at bundle E, tab 39, 602.
Yes.
And also our submissions at 600, paragraphs 27 and 28. Can I just give you two very simple examples to illustrate this? We say there is a set-off against that overpayment. Can you see, my Lord, for 2004, 2005, tracing it across to the right-hand column, the difference between the income and the cost of the regime, Westminster made a profit of £116,520.
Yep.
That profit has never been credited to my clients. It has been retained by Westminster for over 13 years.
Right.
We pointed that out to the Court of Appeal at bundle B, page 350. The Court of Appeal's order that all past surpluses had to be brought into account, which is bundle B, page 178, paragraph 2A, but they were not brought into account, and so Westminster have unlawfully retained that profit. We say that should be set off against the overpayment Westminster made to us. Secondly, you can see that in 2009, the income figure for fees was £436,000. For 2010, it was £441,000. However, when Westminster came to recalculate the fee, and also in the large spreadsheet which they placed before you, I don't need to take you to it now, Westminster only allowed for £363,000 and £436,000. And doing the sums, they're
Right, 363...
363, 808.
Yeah.
And 436, 530. So, in round terms, its repayment was £80,000 light, and that again would be a set-off. That hasn't been answered. Now, just as my clients didn't judicially review the fees which were set in 2013, Westminster didn't mount a restitution claim for the overpayment. Both of those matters have been left hanging pending the end of this litigation. So, our simple point is, if the matters are to be reopened, they should all be reopened, including matters which my clients are legally entitled to settle. My Lords, my fourth and last point on the calculation is this. My clients rewarded interest on these overpayments. The Council is claiming to have all of it repaid, but my clients remain entitled to interest on any overpayment of fees. For example, on Westminster's case, and it's acknowledged and determined now, they had overcharged a sum of £207,689 before the services directive came into force. Nothing to do with the euro points in the case at all. It's shown on their spreadsheet, and they had to pay interest on that.
Yes.
And we say the overcharge before the services directive was even greater than that for a number of reasons which I can take you through. And even for the fees we're concerned with today, the enforcement costs post a directive, it may still be that Westminster have overcharged, once they actually put those fees in front of their Licensing Committee. So, all we say is, at the end of this, there will need to be a new interest calculation. Westminster can't claim to have it all back. So, that's all I want to say on the first half. Can I proceed to my second half, which is the question of costs?
Yes, we better take this pretty quickly.
I'm going to take this quickly as I... Can I take you just to two or three documents? It's important that I show you the pre-trial correspondence. But, my Lords, you've got my chronology.
Yes.
Which I think has come to you loose and in hard copy.
Yes, we have.
And of course, you've read our submissions. My Lords, they started in 2011. By then, the fee hadn't been lawfully determined for seven years since 2004, in fact, hadn't been looked at by the relevant committee. And the Council was impervious to request to review the fee but couldn't justify it. At the outset, my clients tried to understand who had determined what, when, and based on what information. So, the very first thing they did was to serve a free of information quest. And I just need to take you briefly to that, so you can get a flavour of it. It's in bundle E, volume one. And can I just take you materially and very briefly to page 18? Bundle E1, page 18. It's tab 2, page 18.
Yep, thank you.
And just opposite what was once a punchhole, my Lords will see that Westminster told us that their employees were costing them £22,000, £34,000, and £260,000, which is £316,000. They then said that there were supplies and services coming to £30,000, which was never explained.
Yes, yes. We've seen all that. We've got this, yes, yep.
And then prosecution costs.
Yeah, we've seen those figures, yep.
Thank you. The prosecution costs were a fiction, and they were conceded to be a fiction on the day before the judicial review hearing two years later.
Very well.
My Lords, note, paragraph 6, request for documents unanswered. Paragraph 7, request for earlier charging period unanswered, and the pursuit through further FOI revealed no proper breakdown.
Yes.
Then, just from the Lords' note, paragraph, page 56 was the letter of claim. And, my Lords, with the line on the clock, we asked again, please give us the information underlying these charges for half a million pounds a year. We've been doing it for seven years. Please can we see some justification? They couldn't. And we also suggested ADR as a way of trying to understand these numbers and to get the fees down. The letter of claim was unanswered. And finally, I don't need to take you there, but the same bundle, page 7, part 36 letter, we suggested ADR as a way of trying to get to grips with this and get these fees down. So, when the claim started, the part 36 letter wasn't answered, the letter of claim wasn't answered.
So, I see.
So, the background was no determination of fee for seven years, no proper accounting exercise, false and inadequate information contrary to FOI, no reply to the protocol letter, and meanwhile, half a million pounds a year is being racked up without seeming justification, and therefore, this claim commenced. And Mr. Justice Keith found that, as a result, the 2012 determination took place, which got the costs down to £18,000 a year, and then 2013, £3,000 a year, where they have stayed even following the Lord's judgment. And according to Westminster's own committee...
Yeah, but they say there are facts. It's not just reorganisation. They say there are no unlicensed, or virtually no unlicensed sex shops.
But, my Lords, there's two factors. The one is the number of sex shops has come down. The other is they've reorganised their department. In 2015, three unlawful shops, £20,000 a year. 2012, three unlawful shops, average £180,000 a year.
Yes, I see. Normally, we have arguments about costs in writing after the judgment. How much more is there on this? Because if it's...
My Lord, it is...
That's it.
There are written submissions. Can I then just go court by court, because it is being argued court by court?
Well, if you... All right. It's a bit odd having this in argument in this Court.
Well, my Lord, I'd rather agree. And we'd put in written submissions and ask for our costs in this Court, but Westminster have contested the costs in every Court, and so we've just come prepared to deal with those arguments. But I can take this very quickly, my Lord. My Lords, so far as the High Court is concerned, the points being taken by Westminster were delay, lenchies, acquiescence, change of position, and the relief would be detrimental to good administration. They claimed the fees had been determined by a body with virus to do so. They claimed that a prosecution was an authorisation procedure. And really crucially, they argued that even if a surplus was generated in favour of the licensee, they were not obliged to carry the surplus forward. In other words, they weren't obliged to credit the surplus in subsequent years. And of course, they lost on all of those points.
Yes.
And when assessing the costs, of course, my Lords will have in mind the Free Application Protocol, paragraph 7, 13, also 9 and 12, and CPR 44.2.5a, which focuses on the conduct of the parties before the claim. And the view of Mr. Justice Keith, I draw your attention to, bundle E, page 89, which was, this was a pretty bad case, meriting the censure implicit in a high rate of interest because of the pre-claim conduct. So, we say we've succeeded at the High Court, and there are a number of other factors. We ought to have the costs of it. When it came to the Court of Appeal, my Lord, there was a repeat of the argument that a prosecution was an authorisation procedure, which Westminster lost. They also raised a ground about part 36, not just whether we'd beaten the offer we'd made, but in fact, an issue of principle about whether part 36 should even apply to such a case where there was a big issue of European law at stake, which they lost. And they also raised an argument about the timing of the evaluation, which was a score draw, and there was a cost adjustment in the Court of Appeal. So, we say that costs order should be undisturbed.
Well, it all depends on what happens on this case.
Which is why I'm saying, it just seems to me that this is this unusual cause of arguing what costs order we should make. This is rather... This is rather questionable, whether we should be doing this or waiting and taking the normal course.
I'm sorry, my lord, I didn't hear that.
Whether we should be taking the normal course or dealing with costs after we've given our decision.
I see, I see. Well, my lords, I'd be, I mean, we'd be content with that as well. We weren't anxious to come here, my lord, but there were submissions either way. And then there was a, there was a-
Well, how much more have you got that we haven't?
Uh, three minutes, my lord.
Okay, if it's three minutes, you'd better finish, and we see where we get to. But we may well say in the end, we're not presiding this and inviting the-
Until you have a judgment on this issue. Lord, I perfectly understand that. The Court of Justice, lords, Westminster's point in front of the Court of Justice was twofold, which you find in E three oh eight. The first is that the payment was a deposit and not a charge. Secondly, they said it was not a charge because it was not dissuasive. And at the court, as you can find, as recorded by the Advocate General, a paragraph twenty two of his opinion, they re-argued that a prosecution was not an authorization procedure, which is what this court had already determined. They lost on all the points referred, and indeed, of course, lost in all four courts on that point whether prosecution is an authorization procedure. And therefore, crucially, they lost on the lawfulness of the regime which they were in fact operating. That's perhaps the material point. That is what the vires of their scheme was at the heart of the euro point.
Yes.
So far as the Supreme Court is concerned, obviously, the unlawfulness of the scheme they were operating has again been re-established.
Yes.
But what in fact happened at the Supreme Court, as my lords know, that in December fourteen, a month before the hearing and three and a half years after the proceeding started, Westminster argued that they could restructure their charging regime to provide for a different scheme. So that doesn't affect the lawfulness of what they were doing, just what they could do.
Yeah.
Lords, I won't take you to the two authorities, but just ask you to note them. The first was Hunt, Lord Toulson giving the judgment of the court, which is an F, page fifteen sixty nine.
Yes.
Paragraph sixteen.
Yes.
Establishing the unlawfulness in public law is a sufficient reason to expect costs to follow. And Tesfaye, Lord Justice Jones, Lloyd Jones, F, page sixteen ninety five, electronic seventeen oh five, makes essentially the same point. And so we say the EU right has been established despite Westminster's argument. So we say that the charging scheme which was being run has been established to be unlawful and that we should have our costs. But my final sentence is that this argument about restructuring the scheme into A and B could not affect the cost results in the lower courts where it was not raised at all. My lords, I hope that's clear. Westminster suggested a form of order which we don't agree with. We think the order should be drawn up once my lords have delivered judgment.
That again, it's something that, form of order, we'll consider afterwards, yeah.
Lords, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yes.
May it please you, my lords, learned friend Miss Wakefield dealt with the concession point very briefly on the basis, I think, that she said there's not, there hasn't been a concession that's in play. On the contrary, as you've seen from our consolidated submissions and our previous submissions, there very much was a concession. It's, we find it in its clearest form at paragraph forty seven of the judgment of Mr. Justice Keith. That's page two hundred and thirty seven in bundle B one. What Mr. Justice Keith said is, first, I've already said that claimants accept that they should not be liable to recover the whole of the sums they paid for those years. They are only claiming the difference between the sums they paid.
Sorry, what page is this?
I'm sorry, it's page two hundred and thirty seven, my lord.
What is B one?
Bundle B one.
They don't have numbers on the outside. You have to look inside. Where is B one?
Ah, sorry, it's the buff-colored file to your, I think it's been placed on the table to your right.
This one, is it?
That's, that's the one, yes.
So what page is it?
It's page two hundred and thirty seven, my lord.
Thank you.
This is B one, is it? Right.
Yes. So it's paragraph, page two thirty seven, paragraph thirty nine.
Forty seven, my lord.
Well, okay. Paragraph forty seven, okay.
The middle of the paragraph, first, I've already said that claimants accept they should not be able to recover the whole of the sums they paid for those years. They're only claiming the difference between the sums they paid and whatever would have constituted reasonable fees for those years.
Yes.
That concession recognizes what the Privy Council in Weychato held to be the appropriate approach. And my lords, any way you cut it, the submissions that are now being made, and being made by my learned friend Miss Wakefield, go entirely counter to that concession.
Yes.
And what we say is that if they are permitted to resile from that concession, we, the council, are prejudiced. Because if that concession had not been made at first instance and maintained in the Court of Appeal, it is likely that we would have run at least two counter-arguments, two defenses to that. One would have been to have argued for a counter-restitution reclaim. Now, the counter-restitution reclaim, on the principle, as stated in Goff and Jones, that a claimant who seeks restitution of an unjust enrichment must make counter-restitution of benefits received from the defendant in exchange.
Yes.
Of course, the benefits received by these respondents were very considerable. The enforcement, the maintenance and enforcement of the licensing regime, and particularly the enforcement against unlawful operators, gave these respondents a very, very significant commercial advantage in the marketplace. Because unlawful operators who would otherwise be competing with them were-
Yes, I see.
Yep.
What are the five years that Mr. Justice Keith is referring to in that paragraph? He's referring to sums paid for a particular set of years.
Yes, now the years, well, I think to understand the years, he's really talking about, my lord. If one goes to paragraph four, sorry, paragraph three of his judgment, we see at that point, the latter half of that paragraph is on page two two one. This claim for judicial review challenges the fee demanded for two thousand and eleven, twelve. Basis of the claim is that the fee was never determined in that year, even though an annual fee of twenty nine thousand was demanded and paid by the claimants. Claimant's case is that a reasonable fee should now be determined for two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. And one of the orders to seek is a mandatory order requiring the council to determine that fee. And then, my lord, if one looks-
Well, in paragraph five, he-
Yes.
He refers to five, five years, ending two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven inclusive.
Yes, that's right. And the final sentence of that paragraph, my lord, claimants accept they should not be able to recover the whole of the sums they paid for those years. They claim the difference between the sums they paid and whatever would have constituted reasonable fees for those years.
Yep, okay.
So it was, the-
That's a concession you say again. Yes, okay.
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
So we-
I'm having a little difficulty getting, keeping these, keeping the years and the arguments quite clear in my head. Of those five years, only the last one would be affected by the EU point, I think.
Yes. Yes, yes. And those are the years now in play, because it's only in respect of those years, as it turns out, of course. We're talking now about the year ending two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. Because when the, when the final account was drawn by the council following the judgment in the Court of Appeal, those were the three years that were affected by the Court of Appeal's decision in respect of EU law.
Yes. And so far as those three years are concerned, does it remain open to the council to make a proper determination of fees which are compliant with EU law?
Yes, and it has done so. It has done so. The, on, there's a spreadsheet for my lord.
Well, I'm wondering if restitution is really the right way of looking at this. I mean, if you have, if you have lawfully determined that fees are payable, if there's a dispute about whether they are due, that's a different kind of dispute from a, from an unjust enrichment dispute, isn't it?
Well, looking at it at its simplest, the order that was made in the Court of Appeal resulted in the City Council ascertaining precisely from its annual audited accounts how much had been spent each year on enforcement and paying those amounts back to the licensees in question. Now, in the light of the decision of this court, and the understanding was it was unlawful to charge for enforcement. Enforcement, the cost of enforcement had to be borne by the general fund. In the light of the decision of that, of this court, that is wrong. The decision of this court is that it is entirely lawful, consistent with the Local Government Miscellaneous Provisions Act, as understood and interpreted by the High Court in two subsequent decisions, including the Quaitlin decision. It is entirely lawful for a local authority to recoup the costs of enforcement from the licensees. So that the entire basis upon which that repayment was made to these licensees in respect of the years two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen has been shot away by the decision of this court. And it's really very simple. All we're saying is, in the light of the decision of this court, the fees that we charged and that we paid you back in respect of those enforcement costs are reasonable and lawful, and you must now return them, please.
So the theoretical basis of the, of the council's entitlement to the amounts it's seeking, isn't, am I right in thinking, isn't paragraph nineteen of Schedule Three to the nineteen eighty two Act but some other legislation?
No, it's, no, no, it is. It's the Local Government Miscellaneous Provisions Act. That is the act, a schedule to that act that sets out the powers and duties of local authorities as licensing authorities in respect of sex establishments. And while I'm on that, I might just mention one point. The learned friend Miss Wakefield indicated that, oh, well, you can't know how many there are going to be. One of the powers given to local authorities under that act is to determine how many sex establishments there may be in their area. So this isn't, it's not like most forms of licensing where you can have as many pubs open as care to apply for a licence. There is a strict limit placed. It's a very advantageous scheme for those who have the benefit of a licence.
Are there other claims in the pipeline against the council from sex shop proprietors in the light of the decision in this case?
Against, certainly against other councils all over the country. Yes. Absolutely.
Right.
It's, it's, it's an important, it's an important point. The learning that we now have is, thanks to the decision of this court and of the decision of the European Court, is that, yes, we can charge for the costs of enforcement. Obviously, charge a reasonable amount for the costs of enforcement. And that's, the nineteen eighty two Act uses the word reasonable and apprehend it would be implied anyway. But we can, a reasonable cost, but, buts as a European Court, the only thing is you can't charge it upfront. So we, so there we have this type A.
Is there any time limit on the ability of a local authority to set a charging scheme?
Not as such, no.
I mean, it can do it retrospectively.
Yes, and indeed, that is what, that is what these, these respondents were seeking in this case.
You say this is a major problem all around the country and is affecting all sorts of municipal authorities.
Yes.
What are they doing? Are they saying, we now realize that our scheme, as it was, had a prematurity defect? We're curing that by retrospectively putting in place the following scheme? Is that what's happening?
I can't, obviously, my lord, speak for all of them. I can only speak for the ones that I've had any personal involvement with. And, and yes, they've said, look, we, we've got to ascertain a reasonable and lawful fee for past years if it's suggested that we haven't, the two. And if we conclude that anything we charged was unreasonable and unlawful, then we'll return it.
Can I just be quite clear, Matthias? Obviously, the council is required, under the legislation, to determine a reasonable fee, and it does that in accordance with its internal bylaws or-
Yes.
It's rules of procedure.
Yes.
And has the council actually done that in the light, so as to, so as to set fees which are not payable, not twenty nine thousand pounds or whatever it is, payable with the application, but a fee payable for the years in question?
Yes, I mean, that's, that's what this rather, we blew it up and took the liberty of putting it before, my lords, because it's possibly small in the bundles.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is, this is a summary of the work that the officers of Westminster City Council did after the judgment of the Court of Appeal.
Have we got any details of what has actually happened in the public domain? Because there's certain steps which have been taken to put into place a lawful scheme. You're saying that's actually been done.
Oh, yes, that's been done. That's been done.
But have we got, have we got any chapter and verse of what's been done?
What's been done since my lord's decision in this case is that after my lords decided this case thereafter and since, Westminster City Council has charged the license fee that is reasonably calculated in two tranches. There's the upfront tranche for the application, and upon the grant, there is a subsequent charge.
That's going forward, but I'm asking retrospectively. I mean, what's it done about the other sex shops proprietors in Westminster, retrospectively?
It's treated them in the same way as it treated, as it has treated these. It has assumed that they were, they weren't claimants, but it's treated them as though they were.
And done what?
So they have had the, initially, after the decision of the Court of Appeal in two thousand and thirteen, the amounts of the fees that were attributable to enforcement were paid back to them as well as to these respondents.
In other words, they've been treated the same.
They've been treated the same. They've all had their money back, but-
And in terms of the future, sorry.
No.
In terms of the going forward, in terms, rather than going back, have the, has the council changed its rules or regulations to enable it to charge in the two-tranche way you described?
Has there been a for?
Yes. Has there been a change in regulations or just another point?
No, there hasn't been any formal change.
An internal, internal sort of a-
The gentleman who sits behind me is the head of licensing in Westminster, and it's a matter of their internal process. Their internal process-
So they treat it as a change in process?
Yes.
I see, thank you.
Yes.
If that's, if that's right, then, Miss Matthias, the situation seems to be that under paragraph nineteen, the respondents here are under a statutory duty to pay the fee, provided it's a reasonable fee and has been determined by the private authority.
Yes.
And so I would have thought that unless they were challenging the fee by judicial review, you would be able to recover it as a debt. I'm wondering if, we haven't been looking at this in a far too complicated a way by thinking about unjust enrichment and San Giorgio and so forth. It's simply, you have retrospectively determined the fee, they are under a duty to pay it.
Yes, they are.
Is that not your position?
We, what, the relief we're asking from this court is to, as it were, short-circuit any process that would involve us bringing a number of claims in.
Maybe a long way round for a shortcut.
We're asking this court to make the-
Can you retrospectively charge them for something you've given them? Why, how can you do that?
What?
I mean, how can I, if I give you something and it's lawfully given to you, how can I then turn around and say, well, now I want you to pay for it?
Well, in our submission, this is, this is the right place for this to be resolved. Because the claim that we would have, it seems to me, is, sorry.
Well, wasn't it always, I mean, it's not retro, why is it retrospective at all? You always determined that a fee should be payable firstly in respect of applications and secondly, in respect of applications granted, grants.
Yes.
The way it went wrong was in requiring the second part to be paid with the first part.
Yes.
There's no doubt that there were separate sums for application and for actual grants, and they were due. And, um, they were due, uh, and they were due unconditionally once the grant was made. So why is it retrospective?
Well, yes, well, my, 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 my lord, I see that. And I mean, to get, to get to the heart of this, the only unlawfulness in what Westminster did lay in the timing of the charge.
Yes.
Not in the charge itself.
I mean, I think that's the point I'm putting.
And, and, and so, so, so the, i- i- if one's talking in terms of unjust enrichment and their right to a restitutionary remedy, it, it vests solely in that timing, uh, the, the mistiming of the charge. Now, if, if, if they would have, we concede they'd have a restitutionary claim against Westminster City Council if they could say that because of that timing, because we were charged some weeks too soon, we suffered a quantifiable loss. We suffered, and, um, you, you caused us a quantifiable loss. You, 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 um, achieved an enrichment because of that timing feature. But they don't say that.
That, that's why I think that chimes in with my point to Miss, Miss Wakefield.
Yes.
The day after they'd paid it, they'd turned around to it and said, can we have it back? Because you shouldn't have charged it. You could have said on your case, yes, of course you can have it back. We now realise we shouldn't have charged you, but we did. But it's on terms that if we grant you your licence, you've got to repay it.
Yes, my lord, that's right. And that wouldn't only be on our case, that would be on my lord's decision. That would be on the basis of my lord's decision in, in, at the first hearing.
That's what you, you, you say, understand, and I'm not getting you wrong, but absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Yes, um. So, so, and, 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 and so now we, we come to, this court, um, as it were, the ultimate court of appeal in this jurisdiction. We, we came to this court, this court overturned the decisions below. Um, and, and it is open to this court to overturn the relief granted below and to rectify the relief granted below, which we say will be achieved by ordering them to repay the monies that we refunded them after the decision in the Court of Appeal that were referable to the costs of enforcement.
As a matter of, it's maybe a technicality, but actually the courts below weren't dealing with two of the years in respect of which you made the refund.
Um, the, well, actually, when I said the court below, I was thinking in terms of the Court of Appeal.
Yes, I mean, it wasn't, was it dealing with the next two years? But anyway, it doesn't matter, no one's taking this point. You say we should, I think both parties agree that.
Well, what we paid them, we paid them three years' worth. Um, and, um, and, 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 and that we would, it, it, it is, we would, it, it's inconceivable that if, suppose we had secured the stay, and I, I think that's a useful way of looking at this. Suppose we had asked and secured for a stay of relief.
Is why, we've seen that in your case, yes.
Yes. Well, i- i- could, i- is, is it conceivable that this court would then say, oh, well, all right, you can resile from your Waikato, um, concession, merely on account of that timing error that you made, you, Westminster, will be obliged to pay everything back to them? Uh, in, 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 in our submission, that, that, that is not what this court would have done in, 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 in that event.
But one might, one might think that the timing error, if we call it that, meant that there was no sum lawfully due, um, under the scheme as it then stood, because it was an unlawful scheme. It, it's, it's once you subsequently took the appropriate resolution to adopt a, a scheme that was in conformity with EU law, that sums actually became legally due to you.
Yes, I, I, it, it involves, um, this is why we put, we took the liberty of putting the, the Frankovic decision, um, before the court. It's not in the bundles, but I, I hope you'll find a, a copy of it before you. Because, uh, the, the, the European Court held in Frankovic, a decision you, that was, be familiar with, that what the court is concerned with is the unlawful consequences of a breach of community law. It, it's the consequences that the court is keen to see rectified. Now, the unlawful consequences of the breach complained about here was the early charging. And that would be susceptible of, um, rectification by means of, um, reimbursement if that, um, that, that, that problem, the early charging, had caused them loss, had, 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 had resulted in an unjust enrichment to the council.
Does, does it?
It didn't.
Sorry.
Sorry.
But I'm just trying to work out how your argument now stands. Does it go along the following line? Starting point, paragraph nineteen, an applicant shall pay a reasonable fee determined by the appropriate authority. You then went wrong because you established a scheme which fell foul of European law because of its prematurity. That, uh, the sums payable under that particular scheme or charge therefore fell to be repaid, but that still left the paragraph nineteen obligation, their obligation to pay a reasonable fee.
Yes.
You say that if they avoid having to do that, they will be unjust enriched.
Yes.
You are therefore seeking to get back from them that which represents a reasonable fee determined by you. And you agree that the administrative court should deal with, uh, accountancy points if they're subject to argument.
Yes, I, the, the.
Is that how your case is now put?
Yes, yes, yes. And the, um, the, um.
Another way of putting it is perhaps, I mean, you, you determined a reasonable fee. The way you went wrong was, um, in, um, requiring it to be paid on the application. EU law strikes down as much of domestic law as is necessary to achieve legality. And it strikes down the requirement to pay on application.
Yes, yes.
The fee is still due in respect of the grant.
That, my, my lord, precisely, as I say, risk repeating myself, the, the illegality that we are concerned with vests solely in that, um, in, in, in that early payment.
And the problem, I mean, the problem is, it, 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 it has to be a reasonable fee determined by the appropriate authority.
Yes.
And lawfully determined, I think one could read that as. I, I, I wonder if the, if the, if I've understood the point being made by, um, Lord Toulson, I, I wonder if the way he and I are suggesting one might look at this, it, it doesn't actually offer you a, a, a helping hand. Because, I mean, the whole problem with your putting this in terms of unjust enrichment is that you then go straight into these problems about, uh, about San Giorgio. Which is rather an important point, uh, that might be thought of EU law. Whereas if it's simply a claim for payment of a sum that is statutorily due to you, then, um, and which might be dealt with, uh, in a, a drawing up of accounts at the end of the day, then that, uh, that, 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 that chapter of, of the law doesn't need to be looked at.
Hmm, well, I, 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 I certainly wouldn't argue against, um, that, um, that approach. Without, I think, abandoning the approach that I have advanced in my written submissions. Um, there are two ways of looking at what essentially are the same thing. The, the, the outcome either way is, is, is identical. That, 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 that is to say, um, to avoid the outcome sought by my learned friends, which is that regardless of the fact that the only illegality in play is the charging of a fee a few weeks too early, we, they, we ought to be deprived of the appropriate reasonable fee. They, they should be enriched by it. They, they will not only keep the fee, but they will have enjoyed the benefits of the enforcement activities of Westminster City Council in, 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 in the relevant years.
I mean, your, your case is very simple. They, they haven't paid a reasonable fee.
Yes.
We've now decided what a, what a reasonable fee is, they ought to pay it. The only, the only difference is the, 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 the legal basis of the claim is payment rather than, rather than, payment of a, of a statutory debt, rather than restitution.
Well, my lord, uh, yes, and actually, to be absolutely precise, they paid it following the decision in the Court of Appeal, we paid it back to them.
Well, that may create a problem. You've got to say that, uh, you've got to unscramble the money back, possibly, which is why we need to possibly into unjust enrichment rather than simple non-payment. I mean, I see the argument both ways.
Yes. I think there are, I think there are the two ways of, of, of analysing it. And, um, the reason why we're talking about this going back to the High Court, I mean, we, we say it, it, it's all very clear. Um, and the, um, the, if one takes the spreadsheet that's before you, plus the additional spreadsheets that are appended to our consolidated submissions, the, the, the council has gone through the exercise of calculating exactly how much should be repaid by each respondent, with on the basis of each respondent will be severally liable for his or its share.
What are you, what are you saying? Um, we, we, the picture we have, Mr. Coven, was that you go back to the, uh, go back to your clients unless, um, it was agreed to go back to the judge. You're saying it's already gone back to your clients, are you?
It's all, oh, yes, it has.
So you're saying that, that's all done?
We've done it, but.
But?
But I, the, the, the submissions, um, placed, uh, before this court by my learned friend sought to take issue with the quantification. Now, I, I, we apprehended that if there was to be a serious debate about the quantification of the amounts in question, it wouldn't be appropriate to burden this court with those debates, so that.
When, when Mr. Askeski sent it back to Westminster, and Westminster, you say, have done what he expected?
Yes.
You say, you accept it's still open to them to say, no, we've done it, we've got these queries, and that should be dealt with by the judge?
Well, if they sought to challenge, if they seek to.
Well, I, I think they are seeking.
Yes, that's, that's what I think.
That's why you say it should go back to the judge.
Yes.
Not because you're altering his order, but because you say his order has been put into effect.
Yes.
And this is the next stage.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Understood, thank you.
Well, I can't stand here and pretend that they accept the figures and they, they want to argue about the figures. It, it's got to be argued somewhere, I suppose.
So I mean, this schedule is simply your case.
Well, that's, that, that, that's the case that explains.
Yes.
That explains what we paid back after the decision in the Court of Appeal.
And that much is not in dispute.
It's also, yes, it's your case about what the, the figures are.
Yes.
That's you carrying out what the judge told you to do.
Yes, and, and, and.
And justifying, explaining what the payment back is because that's the other side of the same coin.
And, and if, if one goes to the, if one looks at the, um, ta, ta, table C is the fee levels that were set in two thousand and thirteen following the decision in the Court of Appeal.
Yes.
Um, then at table D, this is, table D and E indicate the work that the local authority have done following your decision.
Quite.
And, and then the further.
I was just, I'm just asking whether or not that's accepted on the other side or whether there are issues on the.
No, they, they, no, it isn't.
Well, we've heard what the issues are on the other side. They're the three categories, the point that Mr. Paul's been made.
Yep, I mean, if, if, if.
Anyway, we're arguing about something that isn't, as I understand it, in contention. I mean, it's got to go back to the judge on this, so, right.
Um.
Let's move on.
Uh, yep, prejudice, I mean, the, the, the other thing is if they resiled from their concession, uh, uh, at first instant or not made that concession at first instance, we would, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to tell you, you've already, you said there were two reasons why they shouldn't be allowed to concede.
Passing on.
The first was that you would have run the argument.
Counter restitutionary claim.
The second argument.
Passing on.
Passing on.
Because, um, it, 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 it's abundantly clear that these are, fees are passed on to their customers. And, um, the council would, it would have been open to the council to have, um, put, uh, an, uh, 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 pu- pu- put forward a factual case in that regard.
Well, what you mean is because they had to pay this, their, whatever they pay for the material they sell would take that into account.
Yes.
Yes, it wouldn't be possible to identify a specific sum, but their business model would take into account all the outgoing.
We'd have run a passing, we'd have run a passing on defence.
Understand, okay.
There was, as I say, there was, there was no need to, uh, in, in, in the light of the concessions. So the concession's important and, and, and we.
But I wonder whether it is important, sorry to interrupt you, but i- 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 if you are taking, as your starting point, paragraph nineteen, uh, and if you are taking the position, as I think you are, the fact you've made, uh, uh, um, a legally unacceptable way of implementing that, um, uh, doesn't remove paragraph nineteen from continuing to have, uh, effect, then the concession doesn't actually matter very much one way or the other. It's merely a, a concession up to a point of that which the law requires.
Well, if one understands the word reasonable fee to encapsulate the notion of a lawful fee, and, 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 and that's as it was understood, a reasonable and lawful fee, if, if, there, there was no suggestion that we could, I, 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 and recover, um, uh, an unreasonable and unlawful fee, that isn't, um, and, and Westminster, what, what is now being said, and this is the big difference, what's now being said is it doesn't matter how reasonable, how lawful the fee is, you can't have it back.
No.
And, and, and put another way, if we hadn't paid it and there'd been a stay, they'd be saying, it doesn't matter how reasonable, how lawful the fee is, you, you can't charge it. That is a, it is a, it is a very different way, um, than, from the way in which the court, their, their case was put below. And, and it would have invited the defences I've already alluded to.
Yep.
So that's why we say they, they oughtn't to be given permission to, to resile. Um, the, the, the San Giorgio.
Yep.
Um, argument, um, so-called, um, the, the first point, it, it, this is paragraphs, um, fifty-eight to fifty-nine of our consolidated submissions. And, and I think I've already, um, dealt with this sufficiently orally as well, that the unlawfulness vested not in the charge, but in the merely, mere fact that it was charged a little bit too early.
It was, it was, it's a timing point, not a charging point.
Yes, it's a timing point, not a charging point.
The point that Lord Manth put, put, put to you, yep.
Lady and Kid, um, so far as, um, the, 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 the Lady and Kid point, we say they, um, with respect, misunderstand Lady and Kid. And that, um, Lady and Kid is specifically confined to tax cases and does not purport to affect other cases, such as fixed charge and levy cases, um, within which category, um, a licence charge would fall. So far as the other cases are concerned, fixed charge cases, levy cases, licence cases, we, we say European law is very clear that, um, in terms of the, um, remedies available, the, the, European courts leave that to the national courts on, provided they comply, um, with the, um, a principle of effectiveness and equivalence. And, and provided there is, that the, the national courts in granting remedies in those cases comply with those principles, the European courts say that is a matter for, for, for the national courts.
Lord, isn't there also a distinction, as I put to Miss Wakefield, between the situations where a tax, a charge, an alternative charge has been abolished, and the present situation where it hasn't been abolished at all, it's there?
Yeah.
Could have been made?
Well, that's, I, 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 my lord, yes, I, I, I think that's perhaps going back to our, the, 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 the timing point. It's the timing point. Um, can I just go quickly to Lady and Kid? It's in bundle six at tab twenty-seven, my lords. And it, it is important to understand this case, what it's about and, and what its limitations are, because it is not, as I say, a, 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 a general, um, statement, uh, governing all cases where local, um, authorities impose charges and.
How do we know that?
Well, we, now, if we go to, um, paragraph three first, my lord, please, just to see what it's about, uh, well, if I could summarise what it's about, it, it's the imposing, um, a, a certain type of VAT. And said the government of Denmark, um, there's no harm to the taxpayers because we are abolishing certain other charges. So the, you, 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 it, it, it. That we see that in paragraphs three and four. Um, if, my lords, you go to paragraph sixteen. And, and, and so we, we, this was a case about tax, it was a case about VAT. The second and third questions, which is appropriate to consider first and together, must be understood as asking whether the mere passing on of an unlawfully charged levy by increasing the sale price of goods when that levy was made can, in the event of recovery of the amount wrongly paid, give rise to an unjust enrichment of the taxpayer? Uh, there should be or, whether unjust enrichment can also follow from a saving made as a result of the concomitant abolition of other levies charged on a different basis, even where the taxpayer has not altered its sale prices? So they're specifically concerned here with, with, with taxes. And if one goes to paragraphs twenty and twenty-five, at paragraph twenty, nonetheless, since such a refusal of reimbursement of a tax levied on the sale of goods is a limitation of. a refusal of reimbursement of a tax levied on the sale of goods is a limitation of a subjective right derived from the legal order of the European Union, it must be interpreted narrowly. Accordingly, the direct passing on to the purchaser of the tax wrongly levied constitutes the sole exception to the right of reimbursement of tax levied in breach of European Union law. And if we then, finally, I think at paragraph 25, the conclusion, that conclusion cannot be called into question by the court's judgments in the Pigs and Bacon, Macarren case, and Apple and Pear Development Council, even if paragraph 25 of the judgment in Macarren and paragraph 41 of the judgment in Apple and Pear Development Council, the court did not rule out that the national court, applying its national law, could take into consideration possible methods of refusing reimbursement of an unlawful tax other than passing on. It must be noted that the court in paragraph 20 of the present judgment states that the direct passing on of the tax wrongly levied to the purchaser constitutes the sole exception to the right to reimbursement of tax levied in breach of European Union law. It would, it is very clear that this was a tax case and that it was specific to tax. The court is not saying that the Macarren case, Pigs and Bacon, and the Apple and Pear Development Council case, neither of which were tax cases, it's not saying those were wrongly decided, it's saying those don't apply to this case, this is a tax case.
Well, I wonder, I mean, it says, even if, in Macarren and Apple and Pear, the court did not rule out that the national court could take into consideration possible methods of refusing reimbursement of an unlawful tax.
Yes, but those were not tax cases.
Yes, I know, but it does not suggest that it's treating charges and levies and tax as all being...
What the court was doing was saying, look, you can't take anything that was said in those cases about fixed charges and levies.
I, they didn't make a specific exception in respect of tax, which is what you say they should have done in order to comply with the law as it now is.
So, yeah.
They didn't, those two cases, making general principles about taking into account benefits being for national law, the courts didn't accept tax, which they should have done, you say?
Yes, yes, just so.
And the general principles.
And what the court did in those cases, I mean, we can see, we've got the Pigs and Bacon case at tab 22 in this bundle, and I, can I just invite my lords to read on page, it's 1787 of our bundle, between paragraphs...
But even in the tax case, there's nothing is there to prevent a tax authority which has levied an improper charge and had to repay it, from then calculating and demanding payment of a properly calculated tax levy.
No, no. But the principle, this broad principle, that the provision of remedies for unlawful fixed charges and levies, which include licence fees, is a matter for the national courts, provided they honour the principles of equivalence and effectiveness, is crisply stated in the Pigs and Bacon case, if we look at paragraphs 24 through to 26. And then also in the Apple and Pear's case, which was a referral, I think, from this court at tab 23 in our bundle, the judgment beginning at 1849, and if we, to paragraphs 11 to 18 on pages 1864, 1865, and 1866 in our bundle, specifically, I'd refer my lords to paragraphs 11, 12, and 13 on 1864, and 18 on 1866.
Okay.
And it would have been a big thing if the Grand Chamber in Lady and Kid had said, no, no, we're throwing all of that over, or that principle, that major principle over, we're throwing it over in all situations. They didn't. They appear to have decided to take what can only be regarded as a policy decision with regard to tax cases, and for good, and tax is fundamentally different from other forms of fixed charges and levies, and we deal with this in our consolidated submissions. Tax firstly is imposed and is, if not paid by an individual, there are punitive sanctions attached to it. Secondly, there's no quid pro quo involved in tax. You pay your tax, you don't get any defined benefit for that tax. It goes into the general fund. Fixed charges and levies, take for example the licence fee, are very different. You pay them because you choose to pay them, and there is a quid pro quo, you choose to pay them for a defined benefit. So there's every reason for viewing tax differently, and it would, yes, than for others. But even when one views the, in the light of the Lady and Kid case, we see, two years later, the court going beyond Lady and Kid in a tax case. So it wouldn't, it would not appear that the strictness, the apparent strictness of Lady and Kid, is even being observed in tax cases. If one looks at a La Cor, which is at tab 29 in our bundle, that was a tax case, it was a VAT case, and the defence to the claim for unjust enrichment that was being made by the, by the government in question...
Yeah, yeah.
Was that, well, you can't, you can't have the VAT that was unlawfully charged back, because you were in receipt of subsidies in respect to that VAT that more than covered the amount of the VAT. So you can't have it back. Now that, and we see that, if we go to, in a La Cor, pages two, in our bundle...
Yes, yes.
Two, 2035, 2036.
Yep.
I'd refer my lords specifically for this point to paragraphs 23, 24, 25...
When they refer to Lady and Kid, yep.
Yep, 28, 30, 33, and 35. And the European Court was quite clear that that was an acceptable defence. Well, it, as I say, it's quite beyond Lady, and just finally to emphasise how the Lady and Kid, exception, if you will, the exception to the general rule of the national courts being the bodies to determine remedies, subject to equivalence and effectiveness, if we look at the case at 30, which is Cecil, and on page 2066, 2067 of our bundle...
Yep.
Paragraphs 164, 165, and 166.
Thank you.
And note, what, the point to note, my lords, is in paragraph 164, talking about general principle, they're talking about charges. When you look at paragraphs 165 and 166, when they talk about this, if you will, this Lady and Kid restriction, they're talking specifically about taxes.
Yes.
So it's paragraph 164 on our page 2066, and then look at 165 and one, paragraphs 165 and 166 over the page...
Yes, but they say in relation to tax, I accept.
Yes.
The only exception...
Yes.
Is directly passed on.
And that is our point. Lady and Kid...
Understand that.
Yes, so...
Yep.
So we say, I'm sorry, my lord...
It depends what you mean by passing on, does it? Could the subsidies in Alacor be regarded as passing on, I suppose?
Well, it would be stretch, you'd have to stretch the concept of breaking point...
Yeah.
To do so, my lord.
Yes.
Right, it's certainly not passing on in the usual sense.
No. Now, the... Yeah, yeah. Can I move from, so we say there's nothing in European law to prevent this court from making, ordering the return of the money.
That's the European law.
That's the European law. So far as Wakato is concerned...
Yes.
The, 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 the first criticism that they make of the applicability of Wakato, having conceded its applicability previously, as I've already mentioned, is that they suggest that this court will be concerned if the council, quote, suffers no financial consequences for its unlawful conduct. But, my lords, as we say in our consolidated submissions, neither judicial review nor restitution are punitive in their nature or designed to be. And this court recently, I think it's my lord, Lord Newburger, giving judgment in the HMRC and Investment Trust case.
I think you'll find that was Lord Reed.
Oh, Lord Reed, I do apologise.
Very happy to accept it.
It's in our bundle five, at tab 21.
Yes.
Absolutely right, my lord, Lord Reed. And at tab 20, paragraph 39, where my lord, Lord Reed deals with this point, at page 1724 in the bundle.
Thank you.
So the idea that this court will somehow be anxious to punish...
Yes.
There is, in our submission, no mileage in that. The second criticism that's made really seems to hang on the coattails of certain criticisms made by the editors of Goff and Jones, and the relevant section is in our bundle six at tab 31.
Yes.
If one goes to tab 31...
Yes, you have done that. Yes.
We note first that at paragraphs 4.51 and 4.52, this is on page 2108...
Yes, yes.
The editors concede there's no authority for the proposition that so-called counterfactual arguments cannot be used in cases not involving HMRC.
Very well.
Tax cases.
Yep.
The, this whole question about counterfactual arguments, which features prominently in my learned friend's submissions, it begins and ends with the judgment of Mr. Justice Henderson in the Littlewoods case.
And there's consideration of it in tab 32, isn't there? By, again, Professor Mitchell.
Yes, yes, but one's got to...
But you're talking about the judicial, it's governed, you say judicially, only by Mr. Justice Henderson.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, I needn't take you to it perhaps, but just to give you the reference, it's in bundle four at tab 15...
Thank you.
Where the revenue claimed that if unlawful VAT had not been charged, Littlewoods would have had to pay more corporation tax. In essence, that was their argument. And it's paragraphs 432 and 434 of the judgment, where Mr. Justice Henderson says that the revenue are relying on a hypothetical claim in a counterfactual world.
Right.
Which, and also making the point that it could never have given them a counter restitutionary defence. And in our submission, that gives us a valuable insight into what Mr. Justice Henderson was talking about when he talked about a counterfactual argument, a counterfactual argument. He was not talking about straightforward overcharging when there is legal power to charge some lesser amount.
Understand that.
Still less, of course, was he talking about charging an amount that you're perfectly entitled to charge, but charging it a few weeks early?
Yes.
That's not what he was talking about.
Understand.
In those, in those cases, cases where there is, where there's a legal power to charge some lesser amount than is actually charged, it merely falls to the court to assess and subtract that which could lawfully have been charged from that which was unlawfully overcharged. And that's a matter of law. And it's what the courts in this country have done in the Caloria Fiki cases, going back hundreds of years.
Yes.
And very helpfully summarised by Lord Goff in the Woolwich case, which is in our bundle three at tab three, and the internal page of the bundle is page 793, just as a reference. More recently, the Privy Council in the Wakato case, that's at bundle three, tab seven...
Yes.
And that's precisely what the courts below did in this case, on the basis of the respondent's correct concession and the court's own understanding of the correct position.
Yes.
And as Lord Reed said in the HMRC Investment Trust case, to which I briefly referred at paragraph 40...
Yes.
The court should not be reinventing the wheel.
Right.
My lords, the very notion that the short reference, his short reference to a counterfactual world by Mr. Justice Henderson in Littlewoods Retail, by that short reference, he intended to overthrow those centuries' worth of authorities that are, as I say, summarised by Lord Goff and informed the Court of Appeal, it's absurd. What the difference, Mr. Justice Henderson wasn't talking about straightforward overcharging, as I've said, where there's a legal power to charge some lesser amount. Rather, he was talking about a situation in which the revenue had received monies unlawfully charged and sought to justify its retention of those monies by reference to a factual hypothesis that was at variance with what had in fact occurred. That's what Mr. Justice Henderson was, that's a counterfactual scenario. And that, and the problem with a counterfactual scenario is that it gives rise not to a question of law, but to matters of fact, well, a number, but the main difficulty with it, it gives rise not to a question of law, but to matters of fact that would have to be determined. In that case, would have been not least a complex factual analysis of what Littlewoods' hypothetical corporation tax liability would have been if it had not had to pay the VAT in question. I mean, it's rather as if, in our case, the council had sought to defend its apparent overcharging by saying if it had not overcharged for the costs of enforcement, it would have had to increase business rates to cover those costs, and the respondents would have had to pay those increased business rates, that would have been a counterfactual argument. It's, we are simply not in counterfactual territory. And this is the error that the learned editors of Goff and Jones fall into. They correctly identify Littlewoods as a tax case, they say that there's no evidence or authority to indicate counterfactual arguments cannot generally be used, their understanding of the position breaks down in chapter 22, because they fail to appreciate what Mr. Justice Henderson was talking about when he referred to a counterfactual world. If one goes to, it's on page 2121 in our bundle, 2226 of the work, they, by not analysing just what Mr. Justice Henderson was talking about when he was referring to a counterfactual world or a counterfactual argument, they lump Wakato and our case into the counterfactual arguments cases. Now, neither Wakato or our case were anything, involved any counterfactual world scenario. Wakato was a straightforward overcharging case, to power to charge but too much was charged, or right, reimburse the surplus.
Yep.
Our case was power to charge, but you charged too early.
Yeah, we've got, we've got that.
And with the, and in seeking to, as it were, ride on the Goff and Jones coattails, the respondents fall into exactly that error.
Referring to that.
Now, my lords, those, I think, unless there is any other... Now, my lords, unless there is any other aspect of the submissions of my learned friend Miss Wakefield.
Right.
Those are my submissions in reply.
That's very clear. No, that's fine, thank you.
And so far as Mr Colvin is concerned, do I discern that the mood of the court is that questions of costs are not for today?
I mean, if you, I think that's probably right. Yes, I think that is right. And on his first series of points, you've agreed that it can go back to the judge, not quite for the reason he gives, but because you say you've done your bit, he wants to challenge, so it can go back to the judge.
If he wants, yes, that's where it must happen.
I mean, they're the right usual courses to have written submissions after you know the result in this court, when we can look at what would or should have happened.
Yes, I think when we were talking about costs, we weren't perhaps anticipating the debate being as developed on remedies as it has been.
I, my part, if there's anything you particularly want to help costs, I wouldn't shut you out because you have had something said against you. I don't think I'd be terribly helped about anything about the cost orders below. But if there's anything that you would like to particularly draw attention to, bearing in mind things have been said, then I think it's only fair you should have the opportunity. But I, we would anticipate not dealing with costs.
Well, I think.
After we've given our decision and have given the parties the opportunity to make submissions.
No, my lord, I'm grateful. I'm mindful of the fact that our consolidated submissions do deal with costs, I think can comprehensively set out our position. I might just mention, my learned friend, Mr Colvin, mentioned the case of Hunt, which I think is Lord Toulson.
Toulson's decision, yes.
This isn't, Hunt was a case where there was an unlawful decision of a local authority, but as a matter of discretion, the court refused relief.
Right.
And in that case, my Lord, Lord Toulson said, well, the claimant is entitled to his costs.
The claimant had been vindicated.
He's been vindicated, but that isn't this case.
Understand.
The issue, we say we won in this court. Because the big issue, the big question, was whether licensing authorities were entitled to charge for the costs of enforcement.
It seems pretty clear that we'll be having arguments about this, but I take the point.
Unless I can be then of any further assistance, my lords.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's wait, Phil.
My lord, I've got a few brief points in reply.
Yes, of course.
First of all, the concession. Your lordships have heard my point already, that at the time of the pleading in this case, the early skeletons, the High Court, the Court of Appeal, it was never suggested that there was an alternative way in which the enforcement costs could have been charged. They were either lawfully included as part of the fee that we were charged or not, and that was the question in dispute. In our pleaded case, it's at page 383 and tab 19 of the appendix, we ask for a declaration that the council is not entitled to charge licence fee payers for enforcement against illegal unlicensed operators, an order requiring the council to determine a reasonable fee and restitution of the balance. And the balance in that case is between the lawful application fee, EU law lawful, and the still EU law lawful application fee, the error being the failure to determine.
Yes.
That was what we were talking about. In terms of the defences that my learned friend says he would have raised if they had understood our position to be as it is, I think conceptually he's wrong. Because what happened obviously after the High Court was that we were granted restitution Yes. Of all of the sums contrary to EU law. Now, that was a San Giorgio claim, the High Court and the Court of Appeal, it wasn't formulated as such, but that was what it was. So at that point, on the facts as they were, he could have raised those defences. He could always have, always have said, sure, you've got a declaration that those costs were unlawfully included in your fee.
Exactly.
In fact, I'm going to argue pat on. So it was always open to him, there's no causal connection between the two. In terms of this idea of a statutory debt and the right retrospectively to determine, I apologise for not coming before the court more prepared to deal with this point than I am, but happily the Privy Council in Waikato says something about it. So if we turn to volume three.
Yes.
Tab seven, paragraph 81. Now, the reasoning of their lordships here is perhaps a little elliptical, it may just be me that's being slow, but they say in respect of the Court of Appeal, which said that the relevant authority would have been able to go back and retrospectively set new fees. In the third sentence, paragraph 81, they say their lordships feel considerable doubt whether the principle in that case, that's the case of Wang, which was a case in respect of declarations and demands for payment in breach of various time limits, in any event, they say they feel considerable doubt whether that principle would now permit the Director General to put in place retrospectively a lawful system of charges in respect of the whole period since 1995 down to the present time, but without expressing any definite view on that point. And then their lordships go on to endorse this idea of a counterfactual reasoning. So they're not actually going back and actually determining a fee, which they could then sue upon as a debt, to answer my Lord Reed's point, rather they're just saying, what would it lawfully have been open to us to do? And that generates the quantum of the overcharge.
Can I just go back upon your previous point, as the defences suggested? Surely, since the issue was whether any charge could be made for the operation of the enforcement scheme, there's no way in which those defences could have been based on the benefits received from operation of the enforcement scheme. That's the suggested defence to a restitutionary claim.
Well, the defence of counter restitution wouldn't lie because it's San Giorgio and Lady and Kid, I'll come on to Lady and Kid in a moment. Pat on always lies in respect of a San Giorgio claim.
What was always lies?
Pat on, the defence of pat on.
Passing on.
So they say we would have had two defences, counter restitution, I say, well, no, you wouldn't, because it was San Giorgio and lawful, and pat on, which we know Lady and Kid permits. But pat on would always have lain.
Passing on in, what, in not making charges elsewhere in their system?
Yeah, that there are, they would always have been able to say, you in fact charged the prices of your products to the end consumer, and so you didn't bear the loss yourself. Now, this is a matter of evidence, it would have been tried like it's tried in the Competition Appeal Tribunal every day, but they would have been able to run that argument, it was always open to them on the pleadings. And instead, what they did after the Court of Appeal was give us a full refund of those fees, when they could have said, actually, we're not going to because we think you put the prices of your products up and you didn't bear the loss.
The suggested defence, the other suggested defence now, namely that you've had the benefit of an enforcement scheme.
Yeah.
They couldn't have run on the way the case was decided below, because it was decided that these weren't chargeable, or it was being argued these weren't chargeable at all.
Of course, and the view at the time, I think of both parties, though of course I wasn't instructed at the time, and nor were my learned friends, I think, but the view of both parties was that the vires were such, by reference to applicants, that either you could charge them as part of the application fee or you couldn't. So there wasn't this idea of the type B, and that's another reason why we say we didn't concede this point, but it would also be entirely unfair to act as if we had, because the point was not a glimmer in anyone's eye at the time, including our opponents. And a strict pleading approach here would really leave us bearing the entirety of the burden for that common misunderstanding at that time. Equally, in their pleading, they could have made the point, oh, no, actually, even if you win in respect of the fees, we charged it, do you know what, our vires allows us to charge it in a different way and we'll be relying on that. They didn't make that point either, nobody made these points.
Can I just ask, in relation to the point you've raised under reference to paragraph 81, when the return of the payments was ordered, was that not on the basis that there was going to be a determination of what an appropriate figure would be?
In our case, or in Waikato?
In your case.
In our case. My understanding is that it was that there would be a determination, because under the various regulations, and in fact, I think under the paragraph, paragraph 19 itself, there needs to be a determination in order for the statutory demand to be intravires. But that still nevertheless doesn't make this retrospective determination as if it had actually happened at the time, it's still counterfactual, it's still saying this is what we could have done lawfully.
Yes.
In terms of EU law and whether Article 13.2 is a mere timing provision, you've heard my submissions already on the fact that it's just as much a provision as to the status of the payee and so on, I'm not going to repeat those. But your lordship's view on this issue, in my submission, risks having ramifications on the application of the Services Directive as it's applied in many different countries and in respect of many different regimes, because in effect, what your lordships are saying is, for successful applicants, who are going to end up in the next bit of the directive, the bit of the directive that says, yes, you can charge fees later on, but they have to be proportionate and so on, in fact, the initial prohibition in respect of application charges is a very watered down prohibition. For successful applicants, it doesn't really matter. And what I would say is, that's a question, together with San Giorgio relief, that needs to go to the Court of Justice, if that's going to be your lordship's interpretation of the Services Directive. That it's a real kind of invalidity of a prohibition for unsuccessful applicants, but successful applicants, no, you'll find your relevant member states will be able to say, could have done it anyway, so it didn't really matter.
Yep.
Finally, I think I'm right in saying finally, Lady and Kid, again, my learned friend's submission, so that that case is limited to tax cases, well, I say that's entirely wrong. First of all, Weber's Wine World, which I took your lordships to at the very beginning of my submissions, that uses the word charge in its formulation of the sole exception. That's why I took you to paragraph 94 in that case, diffusing in advance, not very successfully, my learned friend's reliance on Lady and Kid.
Yes.
I don't accept that there's any reason in principle why Lady and Kid would be limited to taxation. The reasons put forward in my learned friend's submissions, I think, proceed on the false basis that like a domestic law claim, the tax authority would have to be unjustly enriched. But of course, a San Giorgio claim doesn't look at the enrichment of the public authority, that's one of the many differences between a San Giorgio claim and a traditional Woolwich claim. Again, I'm afraid, I'm going to say reference again, but if your lordships are going to say that the principle in Lady and Kid, the well-known limitation on San Giorgio, in fact, is not a limitation on San Giorgio, which applies to all charges unlawfully levied, but is only a limitation in taxation cases, I'm afraid that also needs to be referred in my submission.
Can I just take you back a minute, I'm sorry to take you back when you're best visiting, but your reference to the Privy Council in Waikato, paragraph 81, while ducking a firm view on the question whether what the Director General could do, they went on, as you pointed out, to approve what the charge had done.
Yeah.
And if we look to see the way he treated it, this is in divider six, page 937.
These are my bundles. I found it, sorry.
Paragraph 174, he identifies, says that because of the decisions were unlawful, WRL entitled to recover all the money it paid, but distinguishing feature, a situation one where a demand could lawfully have been made. And paragraph 177, unjust not to allow MAF to retain a reasonable portion of our payments to it. And then at the, yes, because there could have been a lawful demand. Paragraph 180, having weighed the considerations, ought to consider, ought to require refunding insofar as they were excessive. Now, what is said in this case is that not only could have demanded a reasonable figure for the cost of supervising the entire system, but actually did, and they quantified it, and that the only error was the, was the timing point. If one applies the approach of common law, if one applies therefore Mr Justice Wild's approach, that would appear to open the door to that argument, is it not?
My lord, you heard my submissions earlier on, that in my submission, the proper interpretation of this line of cases is that the public authority can go back and determine the fee that it would have charged in the counterfactual world to work out the extent of the overcharge. And we see that in particular, I'd say here in paragraph 196 over the page.
Yeah.
196, yeah, in Mr Justice Wild's judgement, where he indicates what he would think quantum would look like, and he says his approach is likely to be along these lines, in each financial year to allocate the available parliamentary appropriation to each international airport prorata to the number of incoming international passengers and so on. So what he's doing is saying the discrimination in that case was that the public body had wrongly attributed all the public money to some airports, they didn't pay anything, and had charged the full cost of the services to other ones. He's saying, well, you need to cure the discrimination so I can work out what the extent of the overcharge is. The way you do that, I suggest, is by taking that public money and allocating it prorata. And then when he's got that number, that hypothetical counterfactual number, he will know what the unlawful discrimination caused, and that's the amount of money that will be refunded. Now, I say in our case, it's not at all similar to that, we know the amount of money that was unlawful.
Well, isn't their case a stronger one? Because the only unlawfulness was in the prematurity.
My lord, it's not the only unlawfulness, it is, the entire fee was unlawfully levied, in fact. They're trying to say, oh, no, we could have had a type C charging scheme that would have allowed us to charge it a later date. I'm saying that's less causally connected or less necessary to work out the extent of the unlawfulness than in the case of Waikato.
Well, thank you very much.
My lords, unless I can be of any further assistance, those are my submissions. Mr Colvin, I think, has a few words.
Very, very briefly, my lord. I just want to clarify a matter. Mr Mathias was asked, has this calculation exercise been done? And he said it had been done, but can I just re-stress that the enforcement costs which we are arguing about today for those three years have never been determined by the decision maker. Mr Mathias in his submission said, ah, yes, but they have been subject to audit, which was also a point made to Mr Justice Keith, and which he rejected at paragraph 23. And so it's very important that these fees are determined, I haven't got into all the difficulties with it. So my solution to this, my lords, if you decide it needs to be redetermined, is to simply ask the decision maker to stand in the shoes of the local authority and determine the fee, taking account of all the matters which would have been before the decision maker when it comes to the redetermination.
Well, it sounds to me as if we do send it back, we will not merely be sending it back to the judge to determine the figures, because you're both agreed that it should be a judge who does it, but we should also say that the judge may have to decide what he's actually doing.
I see, in which case the argument falls away.
We don't need to decide.
We don't need to decide that here.
My present, present view, and I don't want, I.
My lords, I mean, if I can re-emphasise that we would say that it needs to be considered around taking account of previous surplus and deficit.
Could they be audited without being determined? I mean, you submit figures to your auditor which you've determined.
My lords, the fee scheme under this legislation is for the Licensing Committee to do it and not the auditor.
But if you're both content.
Because the auditor would decide what figures, what the figures were, the decision makers decide what the reasonable fees are.
Well, if you're both agreed in going back to the judge, the judge will have to decide the figures and can decide what he's doing.
Yeah, well, if that's the way the court is.
There's enough argument in this case not to open up, agree?
I, there's just one small point, I don't want the court to misunderstand, the figures were calculated in the way that I indicated, but that was then put to the committee in a report, and it was a committee that sanctioned the repayments, it wasn't done, as it were, off the bat of the officers.
Sorry, there isn't a mistake here, the enforcement costs that we're arguing about here, which are the thick end of a million pounds, have never been back before the committee, because of course the committee was always assessing on the basis the enforcement costs can't be taken into account.
It's actually the repayment, I thought, it seems to be a factual.
Well, I think we just have to go back to the judge, I would have thought, don't you? Okay. Well, we, thank you very much, but it's quite right that you identify there is an issue here, so we don't, as it were, inadvertently appear to have decided a matter which is actually in dispute, which we don't intend to decide. So there's nothing else you want to say about this issue, other than to have identified it?
No, thank you.
Are you clear about this?
Exactly.
Yes. Good. Well, thank you all very much for making your submissions in what could have been an overly complex case in half a day. And thank you also to all those who were involved in preparing the written cases. We will take our time to consider our decision and educate in due course. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, my lord.
The board's now adjourned.